All right, it is 7:01. We will go ahead and call this meeting of City Council to order. We will observe our moment of sound reflection followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much.
This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd ask that you review item number four, and if anyone is prepared, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from the 4:17 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Rob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott, all those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Like a sign opposed, motion carries. Recognize guests, we have one on the agenda before we get to public comment, and that is Mr. Wyatt Burns. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, guys. Glad to be back again. This will be my last meeting before we break for summer, and I will see you guys again in September. Today marks reading day for West Lane students, and finals will begin tomorrow. Final schedule will be Thursday, or Friday, Saturday, and then we get Sunday off, finals will pick back up on Monday and Tuesday. Faculty and staff will be serving late night breakfast this evening, a traditional reading day. Commencement activities are upon us. Wednesday, the seventh, will be Grad Fest. Friday, the ninth, will feature an Alderson Brothers graduation ceremony, nursing convocation, the Education Department graduate reception, and baccalaureate. A senior send-off hosted by Dr. Moore will be following baccalaureate. Saturday, the tenth, will be commencement on the chapel lawn, graduating two hundred and ten seniors with summer and winter twenty twenty-four grads walking as well. Summer camps and conferences begin with the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, other groups visiting West Lane and Bakken in the summer, the United Methodist Annual Conference, Tribe This, Governor's School of the Arts, the second of a three-year commitment, the West Virginia West Lane College Gifted Camp, the volleyball camp, and WV DeMole Conclave, and of course, a few weddings to be hosted in the chapel. The French AC Dining Hall has a bit of a facelift with new paint and flooring. New tables and chairs will arrive late in the summer, all courtesy of the Board of Trustees. On the admissions front, new student enrollment is tracking very similar to last year. It's a good thing, and we're excited to grow overall enrollment. Ninety-two percent of students deposited have already finished early registration and will receive schedules on May first. Ninety-five percent of students indicate they plan to live on campus. Very high percentage, good for our community, as we already have students from many states and countries. On the graduate end, we continue to see excellent growth in the clinical mental health counseling program, meeting an important need in our region. On the academic side, offering an online certificate in addiction counseling, the very first offering in the state. We will be announcing soon a new LPN to BSN program in nursing, and expected to have a full cohort this coming fall. Chemistry students recently traveled to San Diego to present research at the American Chemical Society. National students, nursing students just came back from Seattle at the National Student Nurses Association Conference. Dr. Tamar Vayley accompanied a group of international studies majors to the, to New York, to the United Nations, where the students got to meet with Courtney Richray, class of nineteen eighty-six, the chief of cabinet to the United Nations Secretary General. We have twenty-five students on campus this summer with various research projects with faculty. And on invasment side, today is West Lane's annual Day of Giving. You can still donate at give.wvwc.edu. In athletics, the competitive dance team recently earned NBA national runner-up in the Dance Spirit Rally for Division Two, and the men's and women's tennis teams will compete in the Mountain East Conference Tournament. That's all I have for you guys. Do you guys have any questions?
That's it? Any questions for Wyatt?
You have a good summer, Wyatt.
Thank you, you too. I look forward to seeing you guys again in September.
Thank you.
We represent West Lane very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. It doesn't look like anybody wishes to address the council who has signed in at this time, so we will continue down with the agenda and look forward to our line items. Our financial report is up next. Hello, Ambie.
It's a short report. I'll give you your balances for April. General Fund Money Market is checking one million six hundred eighty-eight thousand, your CD's at eighty-six thousand. Historic Landmark Savings is at three thousand, and coal tax is at sixty-seven thousand. Municipal Stabilization Fund, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, Flood Control, seventy-eight thousand. Consolidated Public Works Board is a hundred and sixty thousand, with the cemetery CD at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Sales Tax is at one million nine hundred fifty-five thousand. The American Rescue account is a hundred and one thousand. The opioid accounts at a hundred and fifty-one thousand, we had received thirty-eight thousand distribution in January that added to the one thirteen that we originally got. I've completed the annual ARPA financial report. It's sent in. Of course, all of those funds are ending very soon. We're going to use some of the final monies for water, the water treatment plant design phase. Complete, we've completed the opioid settlement financial report for the year two. Barb and I have been working on the twenty-five, twenty-six budgets for the enterprise funds, so it'll all get presented to those boards as we're coming into June for approval. General Fund revenues is at nine hundred twenty-five thousand. That includes five hundred thousand that we just brought over from sales tax, and expenditures were at five hundred twenty thousand. We had invoices that I'll point out to you for that in general fund that's worth noting. Thirty-seven hundred was sent to twenty-twenty Gen Systems, that's for cancer testing for the fire department. You had approved that two years ago, and we've done that annually now. All-American Fire Equipment, turnout gear is eighty-six hundred. Christopher Knom, Fire Department Lecture and Reading Building Materials. Twenty thousand to Arctic Fitness and its fitness equipment that we're buying with the AFG grant that we received with the fire department. RDR Energy, four thousand for twenty yards of concrete for South Canal Street sidewalk. Twenty-one hundred to Ben Erisman for one week of mowing city lots. Thirty-nine hundred to Upstate County Board of Education for Beast of the Gym at Tenerton Elementary School for Stocker Youth Center Basketball. And then fifty-one thousand to Mountain State Electrical, contract number three, Public Safety Complex Generator. The only other thing I'll report, Colonial Arts Center has a couple activities happening. BCT's production of Alice in Wonderland will take place May ninth, tenth, and eleventh at the Colonial Theater. And we're currently at the art gallery, there is a twenty-twenty-five Andes Arts Journal exhibition that's going to run through May the tenth. We also had the BU Middle School Theater Club in there doing a production of A Midsummer Night's Dream. That was last week, and there were, I think, a hundred and ten people came one night and two hundreds, over two hundred the following night. So that was free to the public, and those, the funds for us to allow to use the building came from St. Joe's, WVU Medicine. Their contribution for some educational purposes.
And I also mentioned that we did have somebody come in, a sound engineer came in and redid all of our, some of our wiring. We had some broken wires, just some run-of-the-mill things that happened, you know, during the use of equipment like that. So the sound system should be in really good shape at this point, for everybody that's using it. I, I have a question about the Christopher, Christopher Knom.
That'd be a JB question.
Yeah, JB, yeah.
Say JB. Christopher Knom.
Yeah, is that, was that part of the fire conference, or?
No, he was an instructor we had in last week that specializes in like Main Street structures and.
Oh, okay.
That was actually last Saturday.
So the reading building tour, what was that?
So that was when we toured all the buildings on Main Street, and he explained the different types of building construction, what we should be looking for as far as, you know, advanced fires and collapse and stuff like that, yes.
All right, great.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ambie? If not, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the payment of bills.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, all those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Like a sign opposed, motion carries. Up next is our Public Works Director, Ethan Griston. He appears.
We need to build a walk-on music.
The street department, we have finished the stage job done part, got the railing installed. We do have a little bit of work on the stairs, but I think it turned out very nice. If you have a chance, drive by and look at it. The pickleball courts did not end up getting paid today. We had some equipment issues. That's on the schedule for the first night's date next week, hopefully Monday or Tuesday. And other than that, they've been continuing to work on Island Avenue with a couple of floors this week. And Patrick Pothol was the contractors that paid. Richie and Rigger Avenue and are nearly complete on lower and upper drives. The waste department received their permit from the DEP to maintain their facility. It's good for five years, so it's good news, not any real big changes. Sewer Department began work on upgrading Island Avenue Pump Station. It's one of the ones that's given us bits for a while and repaired a sinkhole on South Florida Street. And they also, a sinkhole. Continue to work on the development on Vicksburg Road and work through the plant evaluation. And the water department finished up their hydrant flushing and have still been working on the service swapovers for Mead Street. And they also began to work on the water line at CMH on Vicksburg Road. Zoning and Code Enforcement has been working with noise complaints with the police department. And the zoning board of appeals will meet May twenty-eighth at five-thirty for several cases listed in the report. And also continuing to resolve issues with appearances in the lots. Engineering, we're just waiting on the final payout for contract A, that's the final application for the ARPA projects. Those will all be complete after that. And FEMA Grant Number One, the contractor completed the services to install the remaining issues on the emergency generator grant on April eighteenth. And they have completed their final inspection. And the DOH Morton Avenue Project is now the DOH Gateway North Project for the sidewalk from part of our area up towards Lowe's. We switched that due to some property issues, so DOH approved that change in scope and working on the design phase of that now. And I believe that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Ethan?
I'm just curious of the rigor. Getting the vehicles out of there prior to paving, was that?
Yeah, we didn't have any issues with it. They, Ambie said the parking attendant ordered for the, I believe it was the Friday prior. Told everybody, and I didn't have here many issues with it, so.
I just had a few friends that live on it.
Yeah.
They said the notifications and everybody, they said it was really grateful to the city for getting word out, you know?
Yeah, I think we got it out in time, so they all.
I haven't been to Rigger Street, but Richie looks tremendous.
They did a good job on Richie Street. Rigger Street was pretty good, and lower drive, it's good.
All right, and then additionally, under your reports, you've got three line items that need council approval. Do you want to go through those with us?
Yeah, I can go through those. So the first two, the on-call construction services and paving services are ones that we've done in the past. And this will be the same for all three. Typically, we've done one-year contracts on all those. I would like to look at doing a one-year contract with a review and then the option to continue to, a three-year contract. Spoke with some of the contractors, that helps. I think it'll help lower the bid some if they know they have some more work coming in if it's satisfactory. Those are ones that we keep on all the time. It's not anything new, so we always have the pavement contract, always have the on-call contract. The on-call contract is the same as the last time we rebid it out, same scope. The pavement contract, I did do a little bit of work to how it was boarded. There's a mobilization cost in there that kind of makes the award process a bit lopsided to certain contractors. We paved all of ours in one shot most of the time anyway, so I don't think that's going to be a big difference. The main difference in that contract will be, it'll be the sum of the tonnage bids instead of the mobilization. Because that's where the difference in the contract, that's where you're going to save money in the contract. You could have a high-tonnage bid, low mobilization, and then get bitten the butt, to say.
So what you're saying, though, with just like in the paving, it's commencement of each fiscal year, the contractor who was awarded a bid will have the opportunity to adjust the original bid prices for the following fiscal year should probably be in there.
Yes.
With proof of material or labor increases, so.
Yes, because obviously, material prices are changing pretty quickly, so instead of rebidding it, if they can come to us from the supplier and say a ton of HMA wear-in one increased twenty dollars this year, we can add that to their bid price from the initial bid.
At what point will you start those conversations, prior to the end?
Yeah, I'd like to do it in June before the, at the end of the fiscal year, so. Yeah, I'd like to do it in June before the, at the end of the fiscal year, so.
Well, the end of fiscal year is June 30th, right, so?
Yes.
So you'd want to get that another time?
So they have to provide it before the beginning of the following fiscal year. So 2025's fiscal year would end in June of '26, so we'd have that conversation then, and it'd be in place for '26 fiscal year on July 1st.
I can see the benefits with that.
It's like with concrete, you're going to anticipate a minimum of an 8% increase every year.
Yeah, so.
I like this, I like the concept of a multi-year.
Absolutely.
And we do that with our engineering services, test, I believe, is five years, and IT services. It's not, these aren't the only ones that we do multi-year contracts for in the city. And then the third one, which is the reclamation services, this is one that we have not put out before, but I think it would be beneficial. We're spending a lot of time, the crews, specifically water and sewer, whatever, they're doing lines and yards, repairing the yards, and the guys do a good job doing it, but it's not what they're best at. They're best at laying pipe or concrete work. So I would like to bid that out, so at the end of the project, we can have a landscaping contractor come in, repair the yards, get it back to where it needs to be, so we're doing what we need to do as far as utility-wise instead of yard work.
You're talking strictly aesthetic?
Yeah, just reclamation, taking it back if you did three yards, putting it back to grass.
That's an excellent idea.
And that would be same concept, three years.
Yeah.
Review after the first. Those are three, like, put out, open them on June 14th, have them in place for July 1st of this year.
I certainly agree with this and support the endeavor, so you, what is, will the council, would you want to take these up individually, or can we package them up and approve all three concepts?
I would motion to approve all three concepts, A, B, and C.
Even if you package them, you're still doing it individually.
Sure, but just as far as the motion goes?
Yeah.
Agreed.
So Randy has motioned that we approve all three, A, B, and C, and that is to advertise for on-call construction services, advertise for paving services, and advertise for yard and surface reclamation services. We have a motion by Randy, a second by Mr. Thomas, any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you for bringing that to the table.
Could I do?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wake Vince up when you go out there.
Yeah.
Ignore him.
Hey, Vance! How are you?
Great.
Up next is zoning and code enforcement. So Vincent, good evening.
Good evening. Hello, Mr. Smith.
Hello, Mr. Thomas, you look excellent tonight.
Don't be smart. All right, so approval of the building and wiring permits, had four electrical, eight commercial, twelve residential, and three zoning from since last council meeting. Just request approval of that from you. Do you want to wait till the end?
No, we can take that up. If you all, if you all had a chance to look at that listing that was emailed to you, if you have, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the building and wiring permits as presented. Motion by Pam, her second.
Second.
Second by Rob, all those, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, motion carries with noting Mr. Rigger's abstention. Okay, keep going.
All right, on B, it was referred back to council from the planning commission about a zoning change. So we have along South Canoa, if you look in your packet, you've had, you had an area that was about 200 feet, 250 feet in places. It wasn't a defined line. So we were approached by Mr. Sandy that has the property directly behind Advanced Auto. He was trying to sell it as a commercial property. It is now zoned R1, so that means only single-family dwellings in that area. So he put in a request to rezone it where he could sell, sell it as a commercial property and hopefully get someone to build multi-unit, like a condo in there is what he's, what he's looking about. But that was, that was the request, and we would take it clear down to Leonard Street. It would stop at Leonard, just on the other side of the saving lot. So we'd kind of, we'd kind of line it, line it up that way. But it would also take in the church parking lot. When it was, the church was built, they blacktopped on beyond the C2 area, which meant they blacktopped in R1. So we're trying to rectify that problem and clean it all up on that area. So we're recommending to council that we start the proceedings to do the advertisement and the public hearing. We notify all surrounding residents to see if we have any, any kickback on it.
We advertised that planning commission meeting pretty well in various ways, and no one attended to oppose it. And no one attended to, in favor of either, but no one attended our meeting to oppose it, so that was a good sign.
Yeah, it was, but our, we have to class two add it, and then we have to send all certified letters to all surrounding.
That was the thing they did, all the conservative public reports members, some of them asked how well we would inform neighbors and all that, so Vance, you explained the process very well, and they were all very.
Yeah, everyone gets a certified letter, all the adjoining, and we're pretty lenient on that. We take a, take a pretty good swath around it, so you may not even be touching this property, but if you're in eye shot of it, we feel that.
Your opinion is?
Yeah.
All right, so at this time, I entertain a motion of the council that we continue the process and work toward having the public hearing to eventually make this zoning change effective. So I entertain a motion that we proceed.
Second.
Motion by Randy, second by Jack, all those in favor signify, do you have a comment? Oh, you look, you look like you might have. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, motion carries. All right?
All right, moving on to C, it was referred back from the Housing Enforcement Board about, we have some noise problems with, with generator noise. So we brought in from Parkersburg, they've had ordinance, there's been other cities that have had ordinances, people running generators when they do not have line power, all right? So what I'm, and the chief of police, Matt and I have struggled trying to see what we could do legally to, to help this cause along. What we need to do, what I think we need to do, is change our ordinance or beef it up a little bit with the help of Tom, do some wording in it that would allow us the right to do that. And in the International Property Maintenance Code, it says that you have to have main power. You have to have water, you have to have sewer, you have to have garbage pickup, you have to have heat, you have to have electric. So that'll be in the next part of what I'm going to tell you, but for the, for the sake of that generator, we need to, in that 365 ordinance, we need to state that you must have mainline power.
Should, should the language also state that a generator can be used during an emergency situation?
Absolutely. We have those throughout, yes, we have those throughout the city.
I have them.
Yeah, I mean, and it, that, you know, that's different circumstances, but when you're depending on.
I just, we need to be as clear as we possibly can, so I don't want to leave anything into gray or any loophole potential for this to, for someone to circumvent it and say, well, I found this way to.
Exactly, Matt.
Sure, please.
So I, Mayor, to your point, that's, that's what the objective here is, that's precisely what you're laying out. The, the noise ordinance, as it is currently written, contains an exception for domestic power tools. The concern is that it's arguable that a home-based gasoline generator can be, is arguably a domestic power tool. If push came to shove, I would go, I would, I would lean on the no answer to that question, but it's, it's unclear enough that the council's clarification of the noise ordinance to say that domestic power tools does not include the use of a gasoline generator or any kind of fuel generator during a period where commercial electric power is otherwise available within the city limits. And I think once the council adopts that, and because there's a fine, because this is part of the noise ordinance, there's a fine involved, it'd have to be a three reading ordinance. Once that is enacted, then I think a citation of this situation under the noise ordinance would be clearly an order.
Yes, I agree.
So how much time are you thinking this will take? Because I know what the problem is, because I was there and I listened.
Three reading, the ordinance could be prepared for the next meeting, but a three reading ordinance would be, there's, you know, the next meeting is canceled. So first meeting in June, second meeting in June, first meeting in July, plus 30 days.
Well, there is a chance that we may need to schedule a meeting in, because of our water plant.
And you can add this to the agenda, and that, and that can be one of the three readings. As long as the meetings take place at least one week apart, you know, you could call a special meeting or two in order to move this along more quickly, but it would still have to be a three reading ordinance plus 30 days because that, because that's what our charter provides for. And at that point, the citation under the revised ordinance can be issued.
Do you think the bond structure is enough to be a deterrent? Or should we?
We'll, we'll review that, and we'll consult the council and certainly adjust. I mean, once you, once you open up the ordinance to amend that, you can amend it if you'd like.
Yeah, the home power tools, there's hours that you're allowed.
Well, there's a difference between a circular saw. I mean, you're using a circular saw.
Hours of.
Oh, sure, well, right, yeah, and this is daytime hours only. But, you know, there's, I think that when the council enacted the noise ordinance, there's, you know, I think the council would have drawn a distinction between somebody using a circular saw in the garage. And a generator to provide power to the, to the dwelling.
Yeah.
Permanent, you know, somewhat permanently, or at least.
Constant.
Yeah, you know, if for an indeterminate period of time, indefinitely.
We were hoping common sense would be.
Well, but this is why you have to leave things open.
And I don't, and, right, and I, and I certainly don't want to, you know, say that, you know, the people that are doing this, you know, aren't doing, don't have a, you know, a reason to do it. I don't think it's for me to determine whether that's a good reason or a bad reason, but this isn't just being done, they're not, they're not doing it in order to make themselves a nuisance, they're doing it for a particular reason.
Right.
But that reason is butting up against the enjoyment of the neighbors to use and rest and whatever in their own property. And, you know, the right to use your own property kind of changes when you live in a, in a more densely populated area, the social compact changes, and your, your rights with respect to your property are, you know, have to be weighed in the balance of your, of your neighbors in, within, that's the whole purpose of, that's one of the purposes of having a municipality.
Right.
Good, but we have to do.
What's the time, what, how, how long do you think it would take you to have a draft ready to present to us?
Next week, I could have it early, early in the week.
So, so if we potentially scheduled a special meeting, maybe even following our water board meeting next week, or maybe even next Thursday evening, we could have a first reading on this?
Schedule a meeting for whatever, whatever you'd like. You could, you know, it doesn't need to, doesn't need to be a particularly long meeting.
Right, that's what, but I'd like, out of respect for this issue and the, and the neighborhood that is dealing with this, three readings is a long time if we follow the, and because we technically, this is our, is the only meeting we have scheduled in May, we're looking at the beginning of June. I'd like to get this started sooner. So if, if council is available, perhaps next Thursday gives us enough time to put an agenda together, and it will be a light agenda, because this will be considered a special meeting, we can start this process rolling.
It'll be, it'll be ready.
Okay. So let's look at next Thursday as a, as a meeting date to get this process rolling. Okay?
Will do.
Thank you. All right, Vincent?
All right, moving on to.
Well, do we?
Got a vote on this.
So is there a motion already, or have we? Okay.
No, there's not.
Intertained a motion that we, with respect to the Housing Enforcement Board who brought the, who's referred this to the city council, that we begin the process of strengthening our ordinance 365, otherwise known as our noise ordinance, to, I'll just leave it at that, strengthen, strengthen the language of our noise ordinance and direct the city attorney to do so for a meeting next week. Is there a motion to that effect?
Certainly.
We have Pam motion, second by Thomas, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like son opposed, motion carries. All right.
All right, moving on to D, recommend, a recommendation from the Housing Enforcement Board about our vacant property ordinance. All right, so in our vacant property ordinance, and I have not talked to Tom about that, but there's a couple, in reading over it, there's a couple things that will help us in what we're dealing with on the previous one, that we could interject then, so it might be such a thing that we would do two drafts and change ordinance 367 or tweak it, not change it, but tweak it. That gives us a little more teeth in it, and that 367 goes along with the International Property Maintenance Code, the international building codes. So in doing that, with a little tweak from that, we could, if you all, and here's where it gets tricky, all right? You've got to have the, I don't know how to say it nice, but the backbone to say, all right, you're in your house, you have no water, you have no power, the Housing Enforcement Board deems your house uninhabitable, you've got five days to get out of the house. And then we have to be able to have the stomach to say, listen, you've got so many days to fix it, you work on it only in daylight hours, you don't run a generator all night, you don't, you don't do any of that. So if you try to repair it, get service, make it habitable, that's all part of your uninhabitable property ordinance, all right? So, but as council, we have to have the, the stomach and the ability to say, hey, it may not, may be the only place you have, but you're not going to live in our city and cause problems for our neighbors. That's, that's where, just kind of what, what.
So my, my question is, and you and I talked about this a little bit, but for the benefit of council and for those in attendance this evening, the issue we have in the Board of Education neighborhood is very noticeable due to the fact that there's a generator running. Let's say there's no generator. What's, what does the enforcement look like for this? You say daylight hours only, okay. Is it up to our law enforcement officers to check on the house after, after hours to make sure that, that the property owners are out of the house and not staying there all night long in an uninhabitable structure?
Well, the order that we would post on the structure would, would clarify that, and it would say, you can be there daylight hours, no overnight sleeping. They get there, then the police could say, all right, we're removing you from the property. That's where the, the stomach comes in.
Why are they there during the day?
To do repair.
To do repairs, so they would get a permit to do the repairs themselves.
Or contractor.
Whoever, yeah. But to turn utilities on shouldn't take repairs unless there's water line damage or whatever.
Water line damage, electric, oh, the same, just to turn the electric on anymore now pretty well means an upgrade because they've had, they've had.
They're no longer grandfather.
No, it doesn't work that way anymore.
So they have to give it up to code?
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely, which is good as well.
Are the people that are in uninhabitable properties that actually own the property?
In some cases, yes.
Or in some cases that not owning.
Yes, and that, you would go after the owner of that property, not, not really the, and you'd more so if you, if the owner was renting it and didn't have water for, and they were responsible for it, but most of the time, the renters are responsible for paying their own utilities, so.
Well, I think we need to put the teeth in the ordinances because we want to be able to have a livable community.
Right. And normally, you don't have water, you don't have electric, your, your property is in disrepair in most cases, and that's, I know that's a broad-based statement, but that's, that's normally.
These decisions are made to go this route for the protection of the neighborhood?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because it is, it is not fair to the neighbors to have to, to have to deal with blighted property. You know, if, if I'm, if I'm working hard to keep my property up, but Randy lets his completely go, it's, you know, it's not, it's, it's not, you know, I can do everything I can, but if I, if I want to go put a for sale sign in my, in my front yard and have AG go and try to sell it for me, and Randy's over here taking down my property value, I mean, that's why we do these things. It's all, it, when you live, as Tom said earlier, when you live in close proximity to one another, there are certain responsibilities that come with municipal and communal living, and this is, this is one of them.
And you have the right to not let your neighbor's property bring your, your property value down. That's, that's part of living in the city.
There's also health issues. You know, somebody who's living amongst us in the community is not living in a helpful environment, and, you know, that could, just their presence in the community could lead to other problems.
Can we get the Health Department involved with this too?
What's that?
The Health Department will help us at times, yes, they will. Chris is, is very good about doing that. He will help us, but this is something we need to, to walk on our own with, and when we need help, we'll call Chris.
Another thing, you mentioned daylight hours, you know, that changes, like right now, we've got 15 hours of daylight.
Right.
And in the winter, so you've got to see how you want to work at it.
Yeah, and that's how the order will say, only in daylight hours.
Kind of like what we do with our parks too, I mean, you know, because as, as the seasons get closer to, you know, it just goes to dark. So at June, it might be nine o'clock, but in September, it's, you know, 7:30.
Well, we want to be clear that it's not misunderstood that this says they can live there during the daylight hours, not doing any work, not trying to, you know, get their utilities.
They can be on the premises.
Right. They have to be showing progress as well, because they've got to have a certain amount of time to bring this up to the standards with the utilities.
Yes.
Whether it be, you know, showing us work permit, the contractor says we can have the work done in two weeks or whatever.
And most of the time, in these cases, they're going to try to do it themselves, and we will help them with that.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing that. They, they don't have the money to hire contractors.
Doesn't mean you're allowed to cut corners.
No, no, you got to, you got to go by the code.
Right, right.
But we will do everything within our legal power to, to help them succeed in bringing their property up to standards.
Even though the expense to get the electric hooked up, burning that fuel is not cheap. Am I guessing this has been going on, with this specific instance, has been going on for quite a while?
Five, five months, isn't it?
Seven.
Seven months, okay.
And is it really, I mean, do you really show interest here that it's getting fixed up, or is it just that?
It's, it's there, right.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the grass has been mowed at that property yet, and there's a couple of cars that are up on.
Can't run the lawn, or?
And they, they just received a citation on Wednesday from that.
Well, I'd like us to move forward with this and direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance that would satisfy our desire to really enforce livability in, in the residential areas of our community, so.
Is that an amendment to this ordinance, 360?
Yeah, it's a current state of 367, but doesn't give you the ability to do what you're saying.
Correct.
So it has to be.
Yes.
Let's, let's keep it moving along with 365 then, yeah.
Yep. It's been motioned.
At 367, we just need to update it as well.
And I, I think all of us in our community need to be held accountable to make sure their properties are, you know, acceptable. And there are some that are not, unfortunately.
All right, we got a motion by Rick, or is that what our, are you moaning?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
A motion by Jack, a second by Thomas. Any further discussion on the strengthening of ordinance 367? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries.
Tom left, but I'd like to ask Tom to have both those, both those amendments done by the meeting on Thursday.
I will work with him.
Please.
Tomorrow, okay? And we'll get it started.
Thanks. All right, so the last one I have is E. It's for a zoning board of appeals meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, May 28, at 5:30 here at the council chambers. That, we have three issues on it. As you all can see, you've got them both, 152 Randolph, 133 Pocahontas, and 188 Pocahontas. So we will bring that to the zoning board of appeals and try to get a resolution with that.
Some kind of informational purposes also.
The meeting has already been scheduled for May 28th.
Yes.
Any other questions for Vincent? I'd like to skip line real quick and bring in Tom, if that's okay, for his report before we go to JB, because we, this, it kind of goes along the lines of, you know, ordinance structuring, so, Tom? No, thank you. We're, we're moving you ahead of JB real quick, just because we've already been kind of talking about ordinances, and since the discussion of codification is under you, let's, let's go ahead and.
That's fine. I've reached out to American Legal Publishing, they're reworking our proposal from pre, as soon as I have it, I, maybe I'll have it in time for next meeting Thursday, but they're, they're processing that. And as soon as we have something, I will, I will present it to the council for your approval.
Does everyone understand what the, what the codification process will be? If, if you don't, if you're new, some of our new members to council, what this will do is, right now, we, our ordinance structure, if we were to amend an ordinance, our ordinance structure doesn't really give you the ability to just take a piece of the ordinance and, and amend it. We have to draft, it has to be another ordinance number just to amend the current ordinance that we have. So this would be a, a organizational system that we could take a piece of an ordinance and amend it and not have to totally redo the entire.
Two, two points to add, absolutely right, add two points. One, we'll still have ordinance numbers.
Sure, yes.
Because amending the code will still take place through numbered ordinances.
Right.
But this is the same way that state law works.
Right.
And as well as dozens or more of municipalities around the state.
Yeah. Yeah, our numbering system won't go away, it's just that this will give us the ability to pick out a piece and amend it instead of having the whole block to work with.
This isn't an opportunity to look at outdated ordinances that are, okay, those have to be done individually.
I suppose, I guess it is, that the, the codification professionals, because what will happen, what I believe will happen is that you're going to essentially reenact every ord, when this process is finished, when you create the municipal code of the city of Buchanan, you're going to do it through an ordinance, and that is going to effectively reenact every ordinance in the city. So yes, that will, this will be an opportunity to kind of clean up the books and make sure that only, things are only going to go in the code that we really need in the code.
Right, because there are some.
There's some old stuff. Well, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of, well, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's just been supplanted by either state law or the courts.
How long do you anticipate the process to take?
I, I want to hear from the American Legal Publishing before I did that, but I, you know.
Was it started at one time?
It was started back about 10 years ago.
And was this company or?
Yes, well, it was, it was Walter Drain, the Walter Drain Company did it. Walter Drain has, in the, in the interim, Walter Drain was purchased by American Legal Publishing. So they have everything, in fact, to your point, it actually may not take that long because they did make a good deal of progress about 10 years ago, and, and now, and it's really just about kind of adding what we've got since then, which is a much, you know, smaller bite.
Well, if we're going to be reenacting ordinances, I think Marge would be really good for the eight, period about 1850 to 1900 of reenacting some of the things that took place. So get your period costumes ready, we're reenacting them on Main Street, so.
Good, just give me the dates.
Okay. All right, so I would like for us to officially take action, that we do this, because, as Tom mentioned, we started this process, it should have been finished, and so let's, let's do this, and it will make.
You want to wrap 12A, and this is kind of 12A?
Yes, yes. We, let's, let's, let's take action to organize, for lack of better terminology, our ordinance structure here and make it easier for future councils to, to make appropriate changes and, and add new legislation.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Does, are you not asked a question?
Sure.
Does the city require permit, I was thinking what that, or Randy was saying about safety, because generators can be very dangerous with back feeding for utility workers, or fires and electrocution even, possibly, you know, with the residents even there, is, and what I have read about, the most, a lot of municipalities, you missed, you missed the, thank you, counties require a permit, and to have the installation done by a professional electrician, so you don't have these problems, because they talk about a direct feed in your electric box, and if it's not installed properly, it can cause all these problems, shock, electrician, or electrocution, or fire.
That's the case with whole home generators. But the, the small portable gasoline-powered ones you buy at Lowe's, we do not require permitting from those, and those generally do not present the same kind of issue as far as electrical work because of, and you want to, correct me if I'm wrong here, you're going to try, I'm going to try to answer this.
Okay.
Whole home generators and gas generators operate on different sides of the breaker box, and because of that, the portable gasoline-powered generators have to go through the breaker box to get back to the, to get back to the grid. When you're using a portal generator, it's because your connection to the grid is interrupted for some reason anyway, so they do not present the same issues that whole home generators do, which feed in before you're, you know, before you get to your breaker box in your house, which provides the, the flowback concern that you're addressing. Was I right?
You were close.
Close enough to the wall.
So the, the main, the whole house generator has what's called a transfer switch on it that automatically kicks off when mainline power goes. The generator that, that we're talking about, the one you buy at Lowe's, is only plugged in with extension cords, not wired into the main electrical box. That, that generator, two different kinds of generators, so it's not, it's not wired into what's called house power, all right? So if, if a power come back on, or something happened, they cut the line, there'd be no feedback on that line when you run them off extension cords.
We hope so.
Well, yeah.
I had that happen one time before business was, it was rough, like 40 volts went through.
Yeah, but normally the transfer.
Required by that kind of, you buy at Lowe's?
Not to ones at Lowe's, there's not a permit required, all the whole house generators are required because I'll inspect the transfer switch to make sure it does operate correctly. Okay?
Thank you. All right.
So we've got a motion by Buckland and Sanders, and it's involving 11A and 12A.
Yes. Well, we.
Unless you want to keep them separate.
What does, I guess, I would ask, what, I might have agreed to this before, but what does 12A have to do with 11A?
Tom?
Parking, parking and codification of ordinances are two different things.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that, we can do them separate, I, I see your point, you know, so.
Sorry, I'm going to get my steps in today.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't all the, I mean, I looked, I, I saw 11A, but what does 12A and 11A have?
The process of the codification is going to include a review of the parking ordinance.
Gotcha, okay, so, yes, it will, okay, I got you, yes.
So we'll have to do one as part of the other.
Yes, I got it, okay. So specifically for 11A, which is the codification of ordinances, that's what we'll ask for a motion for right now. Is there a motion to that effect?
We've got Buckland and Sanders.
Did I ask for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're talking about 11A?
11A, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed, motion carries. Okay, JB, it's your turn.
I'll be much simpler than Vince. And Dave, you look very nice this evening. Just wanted to let you know that, first time I've seen you in a tie there for a long time, so.
Well, thank you.
Yep, so, good evening, council, mayor, very brief tonight, finally got some reports printed off, and just do a little comparison, through March of 2025, we have responded to 290 incidents, almost 100 per month. A little comparison, in 2024, that same amount of time was 240 incidents, 2023 was 264, and 2022 was 289, so theoretically, we're above the past few years in responses. Training facility, it's moving on, and if you get a chance, you might venture out the Mud Lake and check that out, the welders are in there, almost completing the first floor. I spoke with Joey today, I think we have enough material to finish the first floor before they cut to put the staircase into the second floor burn room, so that's exciting news. Also out there, the entire paint staff has been through the, if you remember, we got the flashover simulator from Loudoun County, Virginia, so we've all been, the instructors have went out and did our stuff, and then we brought everybody on the career side in, and now we're going to venture into our volunteers in one evening, and then we're going to start branching out to the other volunteer fire departments in the county to help get some, some live fire to them, so that's good news. As Randy asked me earlier when Ambie was up here, Chris Naum, Chris Naum came down here from New York, he specializes in building construction and fire, and what to look for, the dangers of different types of building constructions, and he was very amazed at how many different types of buildings we have, you know, on a small Main Street compared to where he comes from up north. You know, very, going from the new building down here to the oldest buildings on Main Street, we were in the alleyways, down to college, venturing into like the English Annex underneath Agnes Harret Hall, and basically, it's a class to just familiarize, you know, especially command and firefighters that go deep in, what to look for, the dangers of each type of building, how they're constructed together to hold together, and what, at what time do they start releasing and collapsing. So very important stuff for us, there was about 12 of us that attended that class, we had one member from another department, but everybody else was in-house, we invited other departments, and we only got one member from another department, so. Moving on, we're scheduling our annual cancer blood draws, one test is a, a blood draw for each member that wants it, and we get that done annually, and basically, tests for 29 cancers are prevalent in the fire service, and basically, with the preemptive law down in Charleston presented for cancer, if you had it done last year and there was nothing present, and you have it done this year and there's something present, you can relate it back to an exposure, you may be able to get on workers' comp, you may be able to get assistance and getting checked and moving forward with that, because cancer in the fire service is huge, it's killing as many firefighters as anything in the fire service right now, so. Strawberry Festival planning is going well, I met with Director Burr from Upstate EMS today, we finalized all the positioning of EMS and fire medical providers, or UTVs, or, you know, all that that we've been doing, and like I've said, we, we planned for Wamsby, that was part of the biggest event we ever had to plan for, so actually, Strawberry Festival, you know, is pretty steady with that, and as long as we keep doing the same thing and protecting the people we're supposed to. to, we'll be good. So it's just about the same plan as we've had like the last couple of years and Strawberry Festival has not changed very little. So promotional exam coming up. We have two members that are firefighter first classes and we do have an opening as a lieutenant. So we opened that position up. Firefighter first class Shane Jenkins and firefighter first class Maria Potter will be testing for lieutenant. We only have one position open, so they have 60 days. They received your books last week. They have 60 days and then the test will happen and the high score is the person who will be promoted. We will also be testing shortly for creating a list of eligibles to hire. We do have one job opening at this time. We're kind of delaying that to see how the process with cleaning up the city's fire fee and moving on to talking with the county commissioner about a first duty fire fee as to how many firefighters we will be hiring, whether it be one or four. So we're kind of taking a slow track on that. Also Joey and I were speaking about it the other day. He would like to, we, we would like to get together and create a nice brochure or advertisement. You know, just, just putting out there, hey, we're going to test is not a good way to present. We want to put some photos, maybe some videos out, maybe some Facebook advertisement and stuff like that. So, so we can get a lot of people into our test, so.
I think something similar could be done as we approach this first duty fire because there are, there's, there's entirely too much misinformation out there. There's entirely, and, and unfortunately, a lot of it's been perpetuated by, by other officials in the community.
Yep.
That, that is just, it's just untrue information and, and it places fear in, in, in people and, and it places distrust in, in people. I, I think we need to have a, a very, a simple, to the point, very fact-driven pamphlet of information, sheet of information, whatever, whatever we decide to help spread the word about what is really, why, why are we looking at this? What does it provide and why is this important? And what do the citizens and business owners receive by, because that's, that's where it is. It's what do they receive for the additional investment into the city of Buchanan Fire Department?
And you've been very cordial in saying what you said, but a lot of people have just been liars. That's how I look at it.
Well, what we need to, what I'd like to, I'll commit to this. I'm, I wouldn't pretend to ask anyone to do anything. You know, you're all elected officials and so forth, but I'll stick to that. I, I won't shoot from the hip. I won't ad lib. I think once we create this document with the inputs from the professionals, that we have that information, I think we ought to be careful not to expand upon that and, and trying to think of the word, but just, you know, stick to the facts. Because if we start saying, well, you know, I think it'll go like this, it'll go like that, you're getting strayed, you can't embellish.
Correct.
You can't embellish anything. We, and if we approach this from that attitude, that we will just stick to the facts, then I think people will understand, will appreciate that.
Transparency.
I would encourage our, once we, once we have this completed, I would encourage all of our council members to be able to have these readily available. Perhaps we put, we put a link on our website, we put a link on our social, we, we share it through our social media pages. We've talked about, Randy and I have talked about certain announcements we, we will come together and we will promote on Facebook through, through paid advertising to make sure we're reaching the vast, a much, a much greater number of people. But I, I really believe that if we, if we articulate this the correct way, if we present facts and we communicate this in a way that makes sense and, and is, and it shows the benefit, we, we can, we can get this established with a lot less headache.
And it's not, now that the state, the law has been signed by the governor, it's in black and white. There's no arguing anymore. There's no kicking down the road, the can down the road. There's no studies that need to be taken. The, the facts are on the table. We just have to sit down, discuss, you know, how we're moving forward and what the county residents in the first duty area would like.
What, what they can expect from us. Not only the people in our first duty, but outside the, the mutual aid departments that we provide help with, you know, as we grow, the support to them also grows because, you know, we, we allow because they mutuate us, we mutuate them, just, you know, it's a partnership. You know, so the, the more people we have readily available, whether they're volunteer or career, the more they receive in a quicker mode. And, and you know, I always go back to reactive and proactive. Reactive mode is somebody at home with a pager on and the pager goes off, they have to get up out of bed or up from the coffee table, go get in their vehicle, drive to the firehouse and then go to the scene. That's a reactive mode. A proactive mode is to have an organization that, that is benefit or is blessed to have a, a place that people want to come and be. And when the tone goes off, they're there. You're, you're eight to 10 minutes ahead of the ballgame when that happens. So, and we're blessed to have the career staff that we do that are very professional, very quick to respond and know what to do when they get there. You know, so when you look at the outlying departments that we're supporting, you know, they're eight to 10 minutes down the road getting out of the building when we're driving to that scene in their district to support them. So, you know.
The other thing I would encourage, and I would encourage anyone here at the table to do the same thing, I would, and I very much encourage our friends up the street at the county commission level to, to do, to do it. I, I know, I know the instinct is when you see an emergency scene, stay away. If it's, if it doesn't involve me, stay away. But it, it is, it is imperative for those of us who make decisions based on, or, or for the fire service, for the police service, for these, for, for our services that we're providing in the community, that we see what's going on. You know, I mean, I try to be at every fire scene that takes place in the city limits. I don't think I've missed maybe more than one or two. And so, but I, but I have a different perspective because I see what we have, what we don't have. I see what we do well, and we do a lot of things well. What, what we don't do well is we just don't, we don't have the people. That's what, that's where we're lacking. We, I would put our paid staff and our volunteers against, up against any fire department anywhere. We have a phenomenal, professional fire department. We just need a whole lot more of who we have. And when you go to these scenes, even a, I call it simple, but a, a simple, smaller, one, two-room exposure residential structure fire, we shouldn't have to be calling Weston and Elkins to come to those types of incidents. That's, we, we cannot continue to, to do that. That's where we're at here. And, and that's what we need to convey up the street that, and that's what we tried to convey at our public meeting. This is not about adding a revenue stream to the city of Buchanan to, to, to do whatever in the world we want to do with it. This is specific to, to the fire service to improve and expand what we have, to provide the service that the community expects from us.
So at this point in time, you're speaking about Weston and Elkins, you know, our closest automatic mutual aid in Upstate County is, is generally 22 minutes to get to the city limits. And at this point in time, Weston, once their dispatch is 19 minutes. So that's just, you know, they're coming from Weston, three minutes quicker than our, our mutual aid here in the county.
Correct.
Elkins is 27 minutes. So, you know, and, and those departments training on a regular basis, they continue their training, they train with us, we're instructors together, so we know each other, we trust each other. So there's a little more of a camaraderie going on there than people, like we said, we offer training to people and nobody comes. So as we move through the process of our, our flashover simulator out there, we're going to start offering to each department, we want eight people, because we can do eight people one time in that building. And we're going to start with just the basics of fire familiarization, how it moves, how it does, and then we're going to move into some thermal camera, thermal imaging camera techniques. So, but we want to start with the basics because people can't know C if they don't know A and B. And the chances is that, that most of these fire departments have not had the opportunity to be in that type of facility. So we're hoping we'll get a lot of interest. We'll see. If we don't, we'll move on to our mutual aid friends to the east and the west.
Well, again, like I said, there's nothing else to argue about. There's nothing else to, you know, it's, it's just simply, do you want us, do you, what formula can we approach it with, so on and so forth. It's just, and actually, you know, at the end of the day, this, this law puts it in black and white. So it's very simple.
Yep. Last thing, I got two short things. We're still working on our mental wellness program. We're designing our peer support group at this time. The, the mission statement and all that has been created, the foundation's there, now we're gathering people to run it. So, and also I'd spoke to Ambie about the opioid settlement money. I would like for, to request some funds from that to get some additional coaches on the police and fire department, mental wellness coaches. So each course is a 12-week certification. It takes, it's, it takes a unique person and you can't, you know, people that, you know, that can sit and listen. Basically, you're a trained listener.
What would this be coaching for?
It's a first responder coaching. It's a certification, it's 12 weeks.
Drug overdose?
No, no, for, for mental wellness and first responders. So.
Doesn't the opioid have, have to be utilized?
It's for mental wellness, period.
This was, this is in-house staff?
Yeah, this is in-house staff.
We'd have, we, I think we need to check.
We would just have to, I, I would just like to give.
Because I know Elkins used 5,000 of theirs to get their coaches there, so, and that's Mayor Markner and I spoke about that. But I mean, I would check.
Yeah.
So, but the more we have in-house, you know, because the peer support system works out.
It'd be a full-time position?
No, 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 no. It's, it's just a certification.
It's a class?
It's a class.
Okay, it's a class.
So it's a 12-week class and you get a certification. So, so basically, to be brief, peer support's your first line of defense. I worked with you, Randy, I know something's wrong with you and I try to discuss things with you. If that approach doesn't work, the coaching network, somebody from within that you trust comes and they sit down and that person actually helps you solve your own problems. And then if that doesn't work, they have the resource book to say, okay, we need to move on to a clinician, we need to move on to here, and we have that resource book to assist that person. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just, I'm up here formally going, I'll write a request and we'll make sure it's legal to do, Tom, that we use that money for that. So, and the last thing I have, well, the two things, the, the gap report, I'm going to email it to you all with 2024 gap report, just comparisons, just to make it easy on you all. And the siren system, as some of you may know, the, the old fire siren that was on top, the old firehouse was in our attic for years. And Jerry Arnold was in his crew, reconditioned it and installed it and we truly appreciate that and it's operational. So Mr. Wykoff, myself and Chief Gregory have spoke about having an emergency system for that for like strawberry festivals. There's a tornado coming, we can blow it. People, you know, they're at the carnival, they can't hear their phones, they can't, you know, so that siren can signify impending danger. And we came up with this policy, you know, specific winds, specific, you know, National Weather Service bulletin, stuff like that. It's not going to blow for every call or nothing like that. The only time you'll probably see the fire department blow it is, will be Friday night, Fireman's Parade starting it. That was always a tradition at the old firehouse.
Well, we tested something for Wamsby. I was over to college.
That was a college.
It was a college?
That was a college thing. It's, it, their JV team.
Right. But I mean, I know we've tested.
Yeah.
Because I had to be there for the testing.
When are you going to do this?
You'll hear the Fireman's Parade night, starting the parade. So, but there, in this, there's, you know, we should have semi-annual testing of it just to make sure it's still operational and that this basically sets up.
Was the last time you used?
We, no, it wasn't up there.
Oh, was it not?
So we blew it one time back, was, it's, maybe probably in January when Jerry and him put it up, we blew it just to test it.
Yes, there was a bunch of comments on Facebook asking what, what was going on.
Is there any way that, in a way like, you blow it for a tornado or something?
Well, that's what this policy, if you read the policy, that's what it's set up.
Okay, would there be one for like, if there's an active shooter in town? You see what I'm saying, there's not going to be able to.
Well, I mean, anything, the Chief Gregory, myself and Steve Wykoff have the authority to call down and say, blow the siren. Okay, for, for whatever. But this is for impending danger in downtown, you know, because if there's a tornado and Adrian, they're not going to hear the siren. You see what I'm saying?
Right.
So Steve's actually working with, I, I think Banks District and maybe Tomlinville Fire Department still have their siren network and they're going to try to put out the same thing for that, so.
What I'm saying is I've heard of other places where there's, they're like, blow it, one long one for, you know.
Well, see, ours is just, it's up and down for two minutes. It's only got one sound.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's just 1950.
Well, but you know what I'm saying? Different places could have a different sound. A man.
This just has one signal. It goes up and down for two minutes and that's it.
So, okay, so you wouldn't know what it really is.
Well, it's going to be Thursday night then.
Right.
Right.
All right.
Any questions? Try to be free.
Thank you, JB.
Under new business, we have three line items to consider. First is a recommendation from the Consolidated Public Works Board to City Council to direct the city attorney to revisit the parking enforcement ordinances. Okay. We have, we, we have, our parking ordinances are a disaster. Okay? They have been added to, subtracted from, put, put tape on, and I, I think they're held together by a few pieces of duct tape and maybe a piece of chicken wire. So what we need to do is we need to go line by line in our city's parking ordinance structure and determine what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, and, and there needs to be some uniform put into it. For example, we need, I, I am all for a warning system, but here's what it needs to be. One warning, that's it. There's no reset time, there's no, well, you get two warnings until this date, then it resets and you can get two warnings again. The warning system is one more, or the, or one warning is enough. Okay? So if, if, if I'm parked on the street and I get a warning, that's it. The next time, it's a ticket.
I agree.
That's, I think that's more than fair. And, and this, what, what we have, we have, we have chronic parkers that are, that know how to work the system and they do it every day. And, and it's just, it's, it's prohibiting people from shopping and eating on Main Street because this, there, there's just vehicles that you, I'm downtown every day between the bank, the store, here, and you, you, you know them. You know the same vehicles that are, that are working the system every day, just moving around a little bit to, to escape being, the, the two hours and, and being ticketed. So the, the other thing that needs to be looked at is we have, one, one of our former city council members developed, was, was kind enough to develop a parking map and for the downtown area. It is a good thing to have, but we need to look at the parking map as it relates to our ordinance. There are a few imperfections. There are a few places where it's not exactly accurate, the map versus the ordinance, the ordinance versus the map. The Consolidated Public Works Board, through the, through the minutes that were taken, has some, has the specific recommendations as to what, how, how to, how to work our ordinance and the parking map together to make it accurate. So that, that's, that's, that's the second thing. And then the third thing is we have some issues in residential areas. Namely, we have the, the whole parking around Westland. We've had other requests from other parts of town to expand upon that. We need to look at that and determine if that's a direction we want to go. And what I'm speaking about is having the residential tag and, and having two-hour on-street parking for, for the residential streets, just like it is up, down by Westland. College Avenue to the north of, of Florida Street and then Barber, Fayette, Pocahontas and Camden to the north of, of Florida Street all have the two-hour parking limit with a residential tag ability to receive. And that is, that, the reason for that, as you all remember, was to prevent or to deter the Westland students and faculty members from camping out and parking on the street all day, all night and prohibiting residents from parking if they don't have a, a, a space and, or a driveway at their home. Westland provides parking through their parking lot system. They need, Westland's. They need, Westland students and faculty members need to use those appropriate parking lots. But we have an elementary school that's on the other side of College Avenue where we have teachers parking all day long in front of homes. Yes, it's perfectly legal to do that, the, the residents do not own the, the spaces in front of their homes, but it, it is a unique situation where I, I don't have that in front of my house. I can park in front of my house because there, I have no school, I have, I don't have a business or anything. That, that needs to be looked at. Do we need to include the western portion of College Avenue in, in that, the same, make it look the same as it does down by Westland? Those are just some of the things we need to look at. So we, we need to overhaul it, it needs, it needs work. So I, I wanted to ask the council on behalf of the Consolidated Public Works Board if this would be something the council would be interested in taking on and, and, and just redoing. It's going to take some work, it's going to take reading, it's going to take studying the neighborhoods, but I think we'll be doing a, a service to our citizens and to downtown if we, if we do it and do it right.
Agreed.
One, one thing I would add, Robbie, is that oftentimes, when you have this kind of situation, you need to have an enforcement opportunity, and I know, I've worked at several different institution, colleges, universities, where we really didn't get a lot done until we got what they call boots. And if there were, if there was a violator that kept violating and wouldn't pay any attention to, you know, ticket or warnings or whatever, we'd put a boot on his car, and he couldn't move his car.
So we actually have that.
We have, we have some of those.
We do, we have those.
But do we use them?
We do, we have, yes.
But we haven't used them for a long time.
It takes, it takes an extirpating circumstance for us to, to do that. There was an issue over here on Spring Street where a vehicle had accumulated significant parking fines and, and hadn't paid the parking fines, so we did enact the boot on that particular vehicle, and so the fines had to be paid before the vehicle would, would be allowed to be moved.
Well, there ought to be a process that's consistent, and you can reinforce it, and, you know, I don't know how many boots we have now, because I made that recommendation years ago when I was on council, and it does work if you start using them.
I think, I think you go back to what Vince said earlier, too. Once we do this, and I agree 100%, we need to do it, and then we need to implement it, and we need to enforce it. We can't make rules we're not willing to enforce.
Right.
Exactly.
You know, I, I, I could never make, in, in my competitions, I couldn't make a rule that I was, I knew deep down, I'm never going to enforce that rule. So there's no use to make it then, so it's the same thing with ordinances and everything else, so. But at the same time, we as humans, we always look to see how we can kind of get around things and park, you know, this way and that way, and that's why you have to change. Every year, you have to review and see, all right, people came up with a different angle to park and then move, and park two hours here, move, park two hours there. So unfortunately, human nature forces us to come back and revisit things and say, okay, we have to rework, we have to, we have to clean it up.
I'm all for these types of policies, and I, I think they're necessary. My, my only comment is going to be this, it has to be consistent and apply to everyone, period. That's why it has to be. You know, when you start making exceptions, then you've lost your credibility, you've lost your respect, and any positive influence that you may have had.
Agreed.
That's just the way it is.
Something else I want to add, if we don't already do it, is, these new sidewalks we're spending a lot of money on and stuff, there's some people are actually parking half on the sidewalk, and we need something we can find them for that.
Yep. I, I, I agree, Pam, and I, and I think what this, this ordinance needs to also contemplate or, or bring action from our city police department, because our parking enforcement officer is a regular city hall employee that is here during business hours. Would you, but, but after that, this, our police department needs to be concerned about this as well. Because if we're going to have an ordinance structure that goes beyond 5:00 PM, our, our police department needs to be, you know, consulted and on board and, and understand their role in, in, in helping us enforce this.
Well, in favor, Robbie?
Okay, well, so I entertain a motion that we accept the recommendation from the Consolidated Public Works Board to direct the city attorney to revisit our, our whole plethora of parking enforcement ordinances to try to make them consistent, concise, and effective. So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Randy, we have a second by Jack, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Jenna Feeley decided that she didn't have enough time to provide to the planning commission, so I would ask that you accept her resignation to the planning commission, and I'd hoped to have a name for you this evening, but I've not heard back from the individual that I'm, that I'm interested in, so I can't provide you a name this evening, but I'd ask that you go ahead and accept the resignation of Gina this evening. Motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
All those, or a second by Rob, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you for what you did.
Yes, we thank Gina for, and she was also on our Parks and Recreation Board as well. We, okay, so lastly, on the new business, the, the IT interview, interviewing committee, which consisted of Mr. Rigor, Mr. Zuliani, and myself. We, we've, we conducted interviews, I'll, I'll let me back up. So we received combined individuals plus IT firms, we received easily 100 applications. The response was overwhelming. The council, if you'll recall, we, we, we were interested in entertaining potentially both, both a, or applications from both the, an individual that we would bring on staff here, or a firm that we would contract with. That was how we started it. After the IT interview committee reviewed, and it involved Ambi and Barb as well, I should also mention, but they're not voting members of council, so that's, but. We, we elected to pursue the applications specifically from the firms. We, we just felt that that was going to best suit our city long-term. So then we went through the process of evaluating our, our, and we had easily 40 firms that, that, that expressed interest in, or provided a proposal to us. So we evaluated those proposals, and we selected six to interview. Much higher than what we normally do for an interview, but we, we felt that we needed to, because of the high volume, we spent an entire morning and into the early afternoon in here, one day interviewing. We had a lot of great candidates to consider. A lot, several brought unique ideas to the table, and could, many of them could have been a good fit for us. Ultimately, it is the recommendation of the, and this is unanimous, by the way, from those of us who were on the interview process. Ultimately, it is the recommendation from the interview committee to extend a one-year contract for IT services to Strategy IT, owned by Jared Ramsey, right here in town. And I will note that we had several applicants that were from all over the state, some not even within West Virginia, most not in Buchanan. But the, the, following the interviews, the, the committee felt that Strategy IT and Jared would be the best fit for our city. And the reason why we selected a one-year, we were, we were talking about a one-year contract, no matter who we, we selected, because this is new to us, okay? And we wanted to make sure that he, that Strategy IT works well with us, we work well with them, and that everyone is happy. At the end of that first year, if everybody is in agreement and, and, and things are moving well, we would entertain a three, maybe five-year contract with that, with that company to further solidify their relationship with the city of Buchanan. I did speak with, with Jared regarding a couple of follow-up questions for him, following his interview, and the price tag of the, of his services for one year, the agreed-upon price is $84,000 a year. If we would have hired someone internally, we would have probably started them around 85 to 90, just salary, and then we would have had benefits on, on top of that. So I, with the committee and, and Ambi and Barb were comfortable with that number of, 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 for, for that level of service provided, and so that's, and Jared was pretty well right in line with me, ever, there, there were, most every applicant on the firm's side was somewhere within, I'd say, 10 to 20% of that number. There was one outlier that we, we did give some consideration to, but it was just too far out of the scope. When, when everybody else is sitting there around the same price tag, and one outlier comes in significantly less, as in like a quarter of, of, of that number, it just, it, it made us wonder what, what, what services would we be receiving, you know, for that, for that investment? Because that is the key word, this is an investment, this is very important. Number one insurance claim in America right now is cyber breach. We hold, we hold so much information here, social security numbers, dates of birth, addresses, phone numbers, full names, maiden names, bank account numbers, routing numbers, credit card numbers. We, we, we've got to have a strong, bulletproof service, and I, and I think we, we, the, we the committee felt that, and feel that Strategy IT, who handles some large firms in our area as well, will be able to, to do that for us. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion that we offer Strategy IT a one-year contract with the city of Buchanan to provide IT services. So move.
Second.
A motion by Randy, we have a second by Jack, is there any further discussion?
Sorry.
Hearing the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, that motion carries unanimously. All right.
When does that start?
Well, I'd like it to start.
Yesterday.
Yes, so like, next week, if, if at all possible, because we, we really need, we've got some needs. And there's going to have to be an evaluation done as well, I mean, this is, Jared would be coming in new to us, and this is going to, we're, we're going to be, he needs to familiarize himself with our current system and then be able to provide feedback as to what we need and where things need improved. So I would, I would, I would encourage us to be, to be thinking about getting him in here quickly.
Sooner the better.
Mm-hmm. And now we will move forward toward HR and next, so that's our next topic. Okay, oh, well, see, you, you groomed greatness there, Pam.
You groomed greatness.
That's right.
Did you do his hair?
He's two years ago.
Okay, we are down to council comments and announcements, and I will begin over here with Scott Randall.
I'll continue, it's good to hear that Jared is in-house. I know that was one of the biggest issues with considering the firms and their distance or lack of being present. Seems like we've gotten the best of both worlds there. Thank you to Wesland and Wyatt, he does, I'll second that on Jack's comment, he presents for Wesland very professionally. Congratulations to everyone going to commencement, and it was great to see that they're hosting ABs as well.
Yeah.
The paving looks great, and just quickly on first due, I'm a very big proponent of an informational fact-based pamphlet. The overwhelming people that I talked to are negative about it, and overwhelmingly, they don't know much about it either, so, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Oh, by the way, you had emailed, and I meant to email you back, Consolidated Public Works Board approved that signage placed at the corner of Walnut, to be placed at the corner of Walnut and Chestnut Street on the current city street sign pole. So that way, if somebody comes down, check and turn up Walnut without getting too far down, so. Pam?
I'm glad we are going back to ordinance number 365 and working on that, that's really needed. It's not, it's not only what we're talking about, but it's also dog barking, that's another thing that's really bad in the city. Also, I'm glad we're getting that siren, siren system for the city, for the residents. Also, next Saturday, May the 10th, is of course Wesland's graduation, but also at 6:30 next Saturday, evening is the coordination of our new strawberry queen. We need to bring her, welcome her, come and visit, and it's really a beautiful ceremony. I wanted to remind the people to not only, for strawberry festival, but start taking better care of your properties, because, you know, neighbors want their places to look nice, they want the people next door to look nice, so, you know, be hospitable, anybody comes to town, and everybody have a great strawberry festival.
Thank you, Pam. Jack?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see we're moving forward with the housing enforcement board ordinances, and I look forward to seeing the outcomes of that and the city being consistent in its enforcement. I'm encouraged by employing an IT firm, just not a system getting hacked, but ransomware and other issues. And when you consider the utilities that we run, and you look at what is happening over in Spain and Portugal, with no explanation why the electric is off, and why that's not on the news, I have no idea. It's very important that we have a, a first-class system, and so that does a huge encouragement, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Well, I agree with everybody said so far, and I really do appreciate the, the housing enforcement, some of the moves we're doing there, because it's critically important, I think, for the overall community. And please, remember you have neighbors, and make sure your house is looking good, and yard cut the grass, and just use common sense, that's really important. That's it, thank you.
Rob said that your grass was a little high.
No, I just got, just got cut Monday. Rob wouldn't say that to me anyway, so.
Mr. Zuliani?
I just wanted to say, going a different direction, just very happy to read about the Buchanan Water Department report, for consecutive quarters in 2024, there were no detectable levels of anything bad in the water, which is a great pause. Maybe you're talking about a new system, but the one we have right now is, seems to be doing what it's supposed to do, and that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Randy?
City Recorder's Report. I've got the report here, so Report of Events Correspondence and Information, we, in our packet, we have the notice of cancellation for the city council meeting May 15th due to scheduling conflicts. Of course, we, we don't want to overlap with the Westfield Strawberry Festival. We've done a yard waste collection schedule and rescheduling update, that's been posted on social media, and we, you know, encourage everyone to look at our Facebook, it gets updates quite often. We've provided the Westfield Strawberry Festival schedule of events, May 10th through the 18th, 2025, as well as the Westfield Strawberry Festival parade routes and parking restrictions information. The mayor issued a proclamation on the The mayor issued a proclamation on the Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month for April 2025. The city is again assisting with West Virginia Westland College's graduation, so they'll, we'll have some street closures on May 10th, as Pam noted, is that graduation date. And we'll have our, our police department and our VIPs out on those street closures as well. And as Rob said, City Buckhannon Water Department files another positive report, the UCMR-5 statement. We're going to be talking to mayor and I and everybody out of the water department stuff, we'll be talking more and more about the new city water plant that the engineering studies are pretty close to being complete. There's a lot of activity on that, so you'll be hearing more and more conversations as we go. As far as my remarks, the event center, we kind of, we had a lot of major events. We now are going into some smaller events. We have some wedding receptions that are being booked, some training classes and so forth. When we do our reports, we probably won't mention wedding receptions so much other, you know, as far by name, but probably just that we do have events going on. Those are private events. But we will have some public events going on soon as well. So that's, that's exciting. I want to mention one more time, too, that we will be closing our work down with the convention center the last two weeks of August and the entire month of September as they completely redo the parking area, which includes changing the angles of the parking at the event center at Brush and Fork so that it's easier to get in and out, paving all of the gravel area that we're used to seeing now, and paving everything out to the highway. So it's going to be all paved through there, hopefully by the end of September, and that should be kind of the wrap-up of that entire project out at the event center at Brush and Fork. I want to wish West Virginia Strawberry Festival much success. In my younger days, I was very heavily involved with the West Virginia Strawberry Festival, and it's a tremendous asset to our community. The mayor has worked extremely hard as the city's representative on that board of directors, so I'm looking forward to a great, great event. And I want to point out, too, that Ethan Croston is very proactive in some of the things he brings to the council, and I really appreciate his approach. I think he's doing a fantastic job in his position as Director of Public Works.
Can I say one other thing?
Sure.
Always do, Doc.
There you go. I forgot that we weren't going to be meeting two weeks from now, but the Almost Heaven Barbecue Feast, that's going to be the 12th, 13th, and 14th of June. And I've been hearing it a lot on the different radio stations, so that's going to be a really nice event. All right?
Thank you, sir. Yesterday, I participated with the mayors on each side of us, county commissioners here and on each side of us, and then development authority directors here and on each side of us at the Second Annual State of the Corridor meeting. It is, that has turned into a really nice event. The Buckhannon Chamber, the Elkins Chamber, and the Lewis County Chamber tri-hosted that. It was in Elkins yesterday. We hosted it last year. I'm understanding we're probably going to host it again next year, so that's, that's good. It is a, it is an information sharing opportunity so that everybody knows what's going on across corridor H in the first, first 40 miles or so of it on our side, I say, our side of the completion. We have unique features in each county, but the three of us also have a lot in common. So it's, it's good to have those opportunities to work together and share ideas amongst the three. And it was a very well-attended event. Want to thank Citizens Bank of West Virginia and as well as Mon Health. Want to thank St. Joseph's Hospital also for sponsoring that. And of course, thank the hard work of the chambers. Tammy does a great job of putting that event together with the new director in Elkins and then Chris Bailey from Lewis County as well. So that was over there yesterday, and that was a nice, nice event to represent Buckhannon. Of course, we are nine days away from, from the big storm coming, and that is a strawberry festival. We need to pray for good weather, and I think if we do have good weather, it's going to be a really, really nice event. We have, we have over 25 bands coming to Buckhannon this, this year. Some of them international, some of them out of state, and several from right here within West Virginia. Our honor band this year is the East Fairmont Busy Bee Band, so they're going to be here. I started working on recruiting them when Randy had them here for Wamsby and build a relationship with that director. And so they're coming to be our honor band this year, and that's always a really good band, always has been. So they'll be here in Buckhannon for leading the Strawberry Festival Parade this year. So looking forward to that. We have Easton Corbin, who is a, has had several number ones on country charts, coming to do a free concert in downtown Saturday night. Stage will be here at the corner of Spring Street and Main Street again. Look him up on Spotify, look him up on Apple Music. The Bear, I talked him into playing more of his, of his music leading up to the festival, our local country station here. So that's going to be a really good concert Saturday evening down here at the, at the main stage on, on Main Street. And then, of course, there'll be entertainment through the week in Jawbone Park, the carnival coming in. We'll be, we'll be featuring our brand-new stage that we've constructed. It'll be a good opportunity to see how that looks for bands, and then that'll, of course, then lead into Festival Fridays this summer. So please enjoy the Strawberry Festival, and for the love of Pete, stop complaining about it. I mean, for heaven's sakes, it happens once a year, and it's, there are communities that would foam at the mouth to have an event like this. This is a, this is an awesome event that a lot of people work hard on, and it's, it really is, it puts Buckhannon on the map more than anything else.
Who's complaining?
Oh, people about parking and noise and curfews and all kinds of.
You know, I have to say one thing about being a lot. I don't have to get on social media and this and all the whole.
It's not social media. It's a, I guess, I've already started the phone calls, emails and everything, so. But please try to take a patient pill and enjoy the festival, so.
I would like to say that I like Strawberry Festival.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And real quick before we end, I hope, I hope you all found this meeting to be informative and got out of it what you hoped to get out of it, so.
And positive.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for being here.
Was it a positive meeting?
It was, yes. All right. At this time, at 8:45, I entertain a motion that we.
So move.
Thank you.